Call to order, the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, September 16th, 2013. Would you all please rise for briefing location to be filed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we simply ask for council direction as the city council embarks upon the affairs of business before us. We are ever mindful that we are moving into the fall and soon to be the winter season, and we are thankful for all the many gifts that have been showered upon Batavia over the years, and for the continued dedication of our volunteer spirit, of our citizenry, and all the great staff that we have been serviced by, by our community for so many years. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them. We also ask for all these blessings and for the guidance for tonight's meeting. Amen. Alderman Chantet, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a great pledge. Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
ATAC.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Homan.
Here.
Sam.
Here.
Facilian.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members of the city council are present and accounted for us, we have the necessary qualms to conduct business. Moving to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Sparks, the Chairman of Governmental Services, would you present this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one change under the consent agenda on approvals. Item C, we will remove this September 3rd, 2013 minutes for approval. I move we accept the changes as stated.
Second. Move by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of the items as provided for in the motion on the agenda. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Facilian.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to item number five, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Sparks, would you present this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent agenda is as follows: To accept and place on file: A) The July 2013 financial report; B) The building report for August 2013. Approvals: A) The September 13th, 2013 payroll in the amount of $735,851.13; B) The September 13th, 2013 accounts payable check register in the amount of $651,215.40; C) The city council minutes for August 19th; D) Ordinance 13-36, annexation of a parcel at 1008 Basswood Court, the J plus E family trust, Eric and Jennifer marrying as trustees applicants; E) The ordinance 13-37, amending zoning code chapters 1, .1, 2.1, 4.1, and 7; F) Approval of the Class G liquor license for Gibby's Wine Den for two events; G) Resolution 13-112-R, authorization execution of Task Order Number 4 with Trottern Associates Incorporated for Construction Administration and Resident Engineering Services for Rehabilitation Project in the amount not to exceed $67,263.60; H) Resolution 13-114-R, authorizing execution of easement agreement and grant of easement for 125 West Wilson Street; I) Resolution 13-117-R, authorizing agreement for American Can Substation Demolition and Restoration; J) Resolution 13-118-R, authorizing execution of restated intergovernmental agreement for Tri-City Records; K) Resolution 13-119-R, authorizing execution of multi-agency public safety information data sharing cooperative. I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Move by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Facilian.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving then to item number six, which is reconvening the continuation of the public hearing for the establishment of Special Service Area Number 57 for Downtown Batavia Main Street program. Scott, do you have any comments to make on this?
Yes, this is the continuation of the public hearing of Special Service Area 57. We believe that we have come into terms with the property owners regarding all of the issues that they were concerned about. There was some concern about some of the original language in the ordinance, but we have worked it out. The draft ordinance that's in front of you, we believe, addresses all of those concerns. The city council would not be passing this ordinance this evening. That would come in November when the 60-day time period that we have to wait actually happens. So, we believe that we are ready this evening, unless there's additional public comment, to close the public hearing and then begin that 60-day time period.
Any questions from the council or the community development director? Okay, it is a public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to address this? John, if you'd come forward, please, and give us your name and address.
I'm John Pitts. I live at 1103 Main Street in Batavia. And a little over two months ago, the property owners requested the continuation so that we could work out what we felt needed to be worked out. And I just, tonight, I just want to thank everyone. This was a textbook of how everyone focused on what is best for Batavia. Everybody worked together. This is what's good for Main Street, it's what's good for the city, and it's what's good for the property owners. And everyone is pleased, the property owners are sincere thanks to everyone, and couldn't have worked out better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Before we close, I just wanted to officially, certainly on behalf of my office, thank the downtown property owners and the businessmen for their obvious concerns and the questions they raised, and their cooperative spirit that they've entered into all this. And I think everybody learned something from the experience, and I'm very appreciative of what was put forward here. And I think we, as John has just indicated, I think we've put together an agreement here that's a win-win for everybody involved. So, I appreciate the good efforts that went forth on this whole thing. Anybody else? I entertain a motion in, Alderman Brown, if you want to, for adjournment of the public hearing for SSA Number 57 for Downtown Batavia Main Street. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Facilian.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving then to item number seven, which is a presentation of the P-Pod Half Marathon. We have some folks in the audience. If you gentlemen would come forward and give us your name and address for the clerk, please.
Thank you. My name is Scott Ite. I live on Elgin at 2285 Country Water Court.
Danny Delgado, 7 North, 195 Windsor Drive in St. Charles, Illinois.
On behalf of P-Pod, Danny Delgado and myself, we'd like to thank the councilmen and women of the City of Batavia for your support in this year's Batavia Half Marathon. We'd also like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and especially Assistant City Administrator Jason Bayer, and City Police Chief Glenn Ottenreith, and also the Batavia Park District. We were very fortunate to work along with Jason and Glenn this year to ensure that we had a safe and enjoyable event for all. Lastly, but certainly not least, we'd like to thank the fantastic community of Batavia. Your race day support is second to none. We had many, many comments from our participants about how great people lined the course, out with hoses, cheering loudly, making each runner feel like they were at home. It's truly a blessing to have a great community support behind our event. We're also very excited to be able to support the Batavia Fireworks Fund as a gold sponsor, the Batavia Food Pantry, the Boys and Girls Cross Country and Basketball Teams at Batavia High School, and the local Boy Scout chapter. We hope that we can continue our relationship with you in the future and showcase what a fantastic place the City of Batavia is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your cooperative spirit.
I just wanted to share some positives of this race that we've heard. We got nearly a combination of about 225 comments from residents, non-residents, that participated in the event. And I would say the number-one positive was the community involvement. There were nearly 40 residents with sprinklers out on their lawn, and you couldn't count how many people were just bringing out lawn chairs along the street and just cheering people on. It was a really, a really neat sight to see this race over the last six years grow to something that I think the residents really enjoy. I, we personally have not heard any, any comments from the city on things to learn from, if there was anything that we could have done differently. Mr. Mayor, did you?
I've heard no comments of a negative nature.
That's great. That's great. I did have one question that I'd like clarification on. Is the sound ordinance 8:00 AM or 7:00 AM?
On Sunday mornings.
On Sunday morning?
Because we're going to have to look it up.
Without looking it up, I don't know.
Okay. In years past, our races always started at 7:00 AM. And in years past, it was, we were told 7:00. This year's 8:00, which was fine, but it just took a little bit of the spirit away from the, the energy, you know? So, I think going forward, if I can get clarification of that, just so that we, you know, abide by, by the ordinance. And while we're here, we were, we were seeking approval for August 24th of 2014 and August 30th of 2015, which are the Sunday before Labor Day, the week before Labor Day, just to be consistent with the last six years.
Well, normally, what we do on those is, is that we obviously let you run it through the staff process and let everybody determine if there's any conflicting other dates or organizations, and then we invite you back to a meeting of the Committee of the Hall of the City Council, and you can put on the program and presentation, and they'll act on it at that time. I think that's, would that be agreeable to the council? That would be the way to handle that, because I think the staff would like to read, the city attorney just informed me that the ordinance says 8 o'clock, so that's what, and I'm sure the staff was just trying to keep you in the constraints of the city ordinance.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay.
All right?
Yep. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving to item number eight, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Does anybody wish to address this? Okay, moving then to item number nine, which is Batavia Main Street. Mr. Madder.
My name is Jeff Madder, and I live at 807 Main Street here in Batavia. So, a really good August for Main Street. We had 60 Main Street volunteers that donated 136 hours for planning meetings, programs, and events in August. If you guys haven't noticed, a new threading business has moved into Island Avenue, which is awesome. And be on the lookout, we've got an antique store coming to 235 West Wilson Street. So, a couple of successes that I want to talk to you about tonight, we had, first was the Batavia Block Party. I saw a lot of you guys there. Thanks for coming out. Saw, even saw some of you with some pie in your face, so thanks to those who were brave enough to do that. And I know the citizens really enjoyed that. So, we had about, well, we had 14 restaurants that participated. We had a bunch of bands, some activities, classic car show, and we had over 4,000 people that came out to this event, which was incredible, just incredible. Some fun facts about the Block Party. 22 pies were judged for the pie bake-off, and I hear they were delicious. $350 was raised for the community garden, thanks to those who did participate in the pie-throwing contest, so woo-hoo. Pie-throwers chose a Main Street program to donate money to and to the community garden, had the most votes. The second event that we did was our annual broker tour. Last year, Batavia was the first community to hold a tour in this particular format. Since then, the tour has won an Illinois Main Street Lieutenant Governor's Award, been recognized at the national level, and many surrounding communities have hosted similar tours. This year, we were able to show brokers available commercial and industrial spaces, as well as some properties such as the Kluber Building that have taken advantage of the city's programs and incentives. Twenty brokers joined us, spending an afternoon and evening learning about our great city Batavia. Looking ahead, don't forget that this weekend is the Art in Your Eye Festival. Hope to see everybody there. There's over 70 vendors, an indoor art exhibit, live music, kids' activities, readings at the Albright Theater, try-it tent, and more. I always love the "and more." You never know what that could be, so you've got to show up and see what that's going to be. Okay? Then get your tickets now for the Batavia House Walk on Sunday, September 29th, from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m., I believe. Alderman Sam has them for purchase tonight, so stop by and see her. Tickets are $20 pre-sale and $25 the day of the event, and are available online at downtownbatavia.com or at Sue's Family Hair, Kay Hollis Jewelers, Gibby's Wine Den, and the Main Street office. The walk features five homes, one historic building, as well as a tea and fine art and artisan market at Water Street Studios. So, as you all know, we could not put on such great events without our volunteers. If you're interested in getting involved, contact Main Street at (630) 761-3528. One more thing about the Block Party that I didn't mention. We were the first organization to put on an event on both River Street and on, at the Peg Bon Center, on the River Walk. And I think it is a great success, and I hope to see more of that happening with other organizations, because we proved that you can do it, and it was a really positive event. But tonight, our business of the month is Windmill City Spinners. Check out their new space at 13 South Batavia Avenue, where you can find unique indoor and outdoor decor for your home. Here to talk more about the spinners is owner Julie Saloga.
I knew I was going to screw it up. I practiced.
It's okay, thank you. Hello, everybody. I, I'm Julie Saloga. My husband, Bill Saloga, my sister, Jody Brickinmeyer, and my daughter, Lily Saloga. Just want to say, thank you, everybody, it's been so supportive with our business. Here, we are new. We have, though, lived in Batavia for 15 years. We brought some of the things that we do have in our shop. We have lots of unique, different kinds of home decor. We do change per season, spring, summer, winter, and fall. One of our specialty items, I'll let my husband take care of, and it is our windmill, our wind, wind spinners, and he handmakes all of them here in Batavia, so I will give it over to him.
Yeah, I handmake all these. I bend the metal with a English wheel. I do the welding. I twist the bars. I put four stainless steel ball bearings in there. They're all balanced perfect for like two mile an hour winds. I can show you an example. You know, there's no wind in the room.
Oh, wow. This doesn't take much at all.
Come on down and visit us. We'll take care of you. Any questions?
Well, one of the things I want you to do, because we got you on TV here, and a lot of people are at home, would you give us, for the record, your address, your times of operation, when you open, when you close, what days you're open, and maybe throw in your phone number and your email address, so that people maybe watching can write all this down, or?
Absolutely. We are located at 13 South Batavia Avenue. We are located on the southwest corner of 31 and Wilson. We are located behind the Blue Victorian Home between Wig City and Batavia Hair Design. Our hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 11 to 8:00 p.m. Fridays, we are there 10 to 6:00. Saturdays, we are there 10 to 4:00. We are closed on Sunday due to family events. Our phone number is (630) 406-6801. Please like us on Facebook. I do post pictures of unique things that we do receive in our shop daily, and if you are following us daily, sometimes there are promotional events for just that day, so come in and see us.
Anybody on the council have any questions? Comments?
I have one comment. My neighbor's a customer of yours, bought that thing, and I found myself just mesmerized. I sit on my patio, and I think I'm hypnotized at times. It's, it's good stuff.
Great to hear. You know, it does remind us of, this one is considered our large one, and it does remind us of our kaleidoscopes when we were little that we used to play with, and that was kind of, I think, the inspiration, and they're very unique, each individual one, people come out, they have to pick the right one, so everything is, everyone's a little bit different, and so you can obviously see that two completely different looks when they're spinning. So, thank you.
Well, we thank you for choosing Downtown Batavia as your place of business, and we wish you many years of business success and growth, and again, we appreciate your citing us as the place to call home, so thank you very much for coming down tonight.
Absolutely, thank you. We would not choose any other town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving then to item number 10. It's getting that time of year, we're getting ready to have the Annual Access Toy Festival in December, and we're honored tonight to have Dottie Fletcher, who's one of the promoters of this, and Dottie is a longtime Batavia resident with a very impressive resume, and Donnie, and Dottie, if you would, give us?
You're embarrassing me, Mayor. Mayor, councilman, I'm here tonight to talk about the comedy show. Last year, Alderman Brown was there. I think you had a good time, didn't you?
It was a great time.
Great time.
I was there.
You were there. Well, this year, we have a rockin' show for you. Patty Vasquez, a longtime Chicago comedian, a very good friend of mine, is now, has her own show on the Oprah Winfrey Network called My Life is a Joke. She also has her own radio show on WGN, and not this fall, but next fall, she will be on a major, regular station TV network in her own sitcom. So, if you want to see Patty, this is the time to do it. She's very, very funny. She does a lot of work for autism. She's a very charitable person, and I think that you can stop and talk to her after the show, and I think that you would really enjoy your conversation with her. As for the show this year, the tickets are available at the police department, starting tomorrow, probably, Mayor. We have, I've been all over town, you've probably seen the posters up everywhere. I want to thank all the merchants in Batavia. They've been very, very generous this year. So far, we've already gotten 40 gift cards for our silent auction, and it's just a very good time. The Moose donates their building every year for us, and so 100% of all the proceeds go to Access Toys. Now, last year, we were over the $3,000 mark at the show because the person, Mr. Tom Kane, who won the 50/50 raffle, donated the money back to Access Toys. We are still looking for toys for the toy drive. If anybody wants to drop off toys at the police station, or they can call Rudy or myself, we'll pick them up anytime, anywhere. We're piling up the church right now. We're expecting an exceedingly large amount of folks that need help this year. Last year, it was over 600 families, Mayor?
Not my count.
That we helped, yeah. So, it's going to be a really good time. We have a rockin' auction, we have a 50/50 split, and the show is going to be great this year. So, I hope that you will all come and enjoy yourself and donate some money to Access Toys. This year, Riverfront Jeep Eagle is sponsoring the comedian for us, so we're good to go. Is there any questions?
Do you have tickets with you tonight?
No, the mayor does. He's got a whole package of them. I don't know if he?
Why don't you just for the, because again, we got you on TV here. Give us the date, time, location, you know, what the Moose?
Okay.
How much it costs to get in?
Right. The date is October 12th. It's a Saturday night. The doors open at 6:30. The show starts at 8:00. It's at the Batavia Moose Family Center on Batavia Avenue.
We want to encourage everybody to come on down. I'll be there, I'm sure, and Alderman Brown's pretty much a regular.
He's a regular.
I'll be there.
The tickets are $10 at the door, or like I said, you can buy them at the police department, probably, starting tomorrow. We'll get you some.
What are you going to do with the overflow crowd? That's what I want to know.
We're going to pack them in.
This is, I've always enjoyed this. This is a most worthy cause, and certainly what turns around and this money is spent for, you know, the Batavia Access Committee really has two roles in this world. One is the Fourth of July fireworks, and the other is the Christmas toy distribution program. And both of these, we take to heart here, and we seemingly do a pretty good job of serving. As Dottie just mentioned, I think last year, we were upwards of 600 families that were serviced by this program, and it was not only toys, but some minor clothing, and gift cards, and a bunch of other supportive things, and so we certainly try to identify who in our community needs the support, and we send them a letter of invitation, and hopefully many of them take us up on it, and we were able to, you know, supply Batavia-based folks with a lot of support at Christmas time. So, the last couple Sundays before Christmas is when all this takes place, and we've been fortunate, the last couple of years, we've been able to stage this over at the old First Baptist Church, because it makes a nice room for bringing them in and out. We can get everybody in out of the cold, and they're not lined up down Wilson Street with everybody driving by and looking at them, so they like?
At 5:00 in the morning.
At 5:00 in the morning. So, again, thanks, Dottie, and Rudy Dubus is here with her, and he's one of the co-chairmen of this, along with Roy Bailey, and I'm sure we're going to be hearing from those guys repeatedly in the meetings ahead. So, I talked to Roy today. He's out of town for the moment, but he's already firing me up that he's ready to, he and Rudy are ready to come on down and let us hear all about it. So, we'll be, I'm sure, hearing a lot about this in the next few weeks.
Well, thank you very much, and I hope to see all of you there. I know you'll have a great time.
Thank you, Dottie. Okay, moving to item number 11, which is a presentation tonight on Batavia's Art in the Eye program that's coming up, and we have Rebecca Allen here with us to do that, so, she's already working this week. I was out today, kind of looking at how things were being manicured outside, and she was out there making observations with me, so.
Yeah, let's see if I can get this up. Come on. Get the right thing. There we go. Now. I don't see what I'm making for screen. I'm just going to label it like that. Do you know? Oops. This is record narration. The left, far left. Yeah, far left. There we go. There we go. All right. And then I'll just switch on this.
I'm here to invite you to our Ninth Annual Art in Your Eye Art Festival, which is this coming weekend on the twenty-
I hate to interrupt you, but you need to use the microphone or we won't get on to the broadcast.
I'm Rebecca Allen. I'm here to invite you to the Ninth Annual Art in Your Eye Art Festival, which is this weekend on the 21st and 22nd, just outside of City Hall. We usually have between eight and 10,000 people that come to this festival. It's a great way to show off the beautiful Riverwalk of Batavia. I'm going to make this change. Which one do you hit? Which one do you hit to turn? Okay, well, anyway. This year, we have seventy-two different artists. We have, um, Peters, Rens, Repglas, all sorts of things. We're, um, a couple of new things we have this year is the Teen Writers and Artists Project is doing a slam poetry showcase up at Walbright Theater on the third floor of City Hall. Another favorite showcasing is Fred Bell, who's a teen artist, is, um, is bringing her revolving circus, which is a interactive project with the travels and she puts writing sort of people on their favorite objects and does all the, that relates to that and is a sort of revolving art project. One of our programs is our, is our poster artist program. This year, our poster artist is Michelle Norman. Every year we select, uh, we select a Batavia artist to highlight, um, the festival, tries to create publicity for this artist and we selected another piece and featured on the poster. And the committee purchases this piece of artwork and lends it to the city of Batavia for their permanent art collection. This is the, uh, this artist that we selected this year for Michelle Norman and we'd like to present it to the city. The permanent art collection is upstairs on the third floor. Oh, sorry, on the second floor. And we'd like to invite all of you. Thank you.
Think, before you get off, again, we have you on, on TV. If you could speak into the mic and tell us, I know it's Saturday and Sunday, but do we have approximate starting time and ending time and?
It's the Saturday, the 21st and 22nd. It starts on Saturday, it's from 10 to 5:00, and on Sunday, it's from 10 to 4:00. There's continuous music all day, there's children's activities, um, there's an exhibit inside City Hall, and, um, we're hoping to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. We encourage everybody to come on down. This really is a very special moment in the year period of time in Batavia, so we encourage everybody to come on down and enjoy it. So, thank you for all you're doing to help put this together and look forward to hanging that upstairs in the collection, so. Thank you. Okay. We'll get on to item number 12 then, which is Resolution 13-115-R, authorizing submittal of a grant application for the Surface Transportation Program funds for the Main Street Deerpath Road intersection improvement. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a, a grant application that we are going to apply for, for redoing Main Street and Deerpath, the kind of offset intersection that's out there on Main Street. And one of the things we'll be exploring during that timeframe and looking at the options will be for a roundabout to go in there. So, that is one of the things that is coming up with that. Basically, this is a 75%, 25% grant where we would kick in 25% of the funds for it. Basically, this is the grant application end of it. And with that said, I would make the motion that we approve Resolution 13-115-R, or I'm sorry, 113R? No, 115.
115.
One memo here. For the grant application for Surface Transportation Program funds for Main Street and Deerpath Road intersection improvements.
Second. Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution 13-115-R, authorizing STP, uh, grant application for the Main Street Deerpath Road intersection. Any discussion, Alderman Brown?
I just want to make mention that, um, a lot of the money that is going to be needed to fund whatever improvement that's going to happen out there is coming from the developers that have developed in that corridor. There's $1,390,331 sitting in escrow for this use that years back, as the developers were, were coming to the city, the city said, you know, "We realize we're going to need some type of improvement to that intersection, so you're going to need to contribute to that improvement," in which they did. So, that's where this money's going to be coming from.
Well, Ms. Stark?
This past weekend, my husband and I traveled to central Wisconsin. We were near the Dells area. And they have now bypassed a big chunk of Route 12 with a road that has roundabouts about every three or four miles. And it was very interesting to watch the traffic move through them because it moved very quickly and no one seemed overly confused and no one got in the second center lane and just kept going around. So, um, but I have to say, I was really impressed because I, I was a little hesitant, you know, like what is a roundabout going to be like in terms of traffic? And, um, everyone, you know, you get in and you yield and you go the way you need to go and follow the signage and it's really, I was impressed by what a great traffic mover it is.
May I add to that? It was interesting also that this week, since I worked for State Farm, they came out with a rather large article about how they're gaining in popularity across the nation. And the, the way that they're designed, it does reduce fatalities and injuries and our company is at least strongly behind them.
Anybody else? As I mentioned at, at the J-Cow meeting, I've witnessed these in place in Mount Horeb, Wisconsin and in Port Washington, Wisconsin. And I know city officials in both towns and they speak very highly of them and that, you know, initially, there was some reservation by the constituency about whether these were a good thing or not, but once the first one got it put into place, both towns, I believe, now have added a second and a third one based on the community popularity and, and the traffic safety history that they seem to have generated. And they've taken some very problematic intersections. I know in Port Washington, they've got them right in the kind of their, their kind of external strip commercial area coming into town. And, uh, there's Culver Restaurants and, you know, other McDonald's and other one, other businesses sitting right near these things and everybody seems to think that they're quite good. So, I guess it's something that, I'd be very anxious, certainly the Seventh Ward Alderman, you would be the ones that get the most feedback from the folks out in Tanglewood and Weaver Landing and some of that area as to what they may think about it. But, uh, I think there may be just some public education, but I will certainly be doing some outreach to some of those folks to get their understandings as to what we're most talking about here. I gotta believe Holy Cross Church may have something to say about it once they finally realize that we're thinking about this too. So, that would be another one we'll have to talk with. Okay, no further discussion. Kirk call the roll on Resolution 13-115-R.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Resolution 13-115-R is approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving item number 13, approval to waive the formal bidding process for Wilson Street Water Main Extension.
That's going to be me.
Alderman Clark?
Thank you. I'm going to do 13 and 14 because they're, they go together. I'm first going to describe what we're going to do and then I'll make the motion to waive the formal bidding. As an extension of the new eight-inch water pipe that was recently installed in conjunction with the Wilson Streets, Streetscape project, the city desires to further extend the new water main to the west approximately an additional 150 feet. This extension will eventually allow for better fire flows in the neighborhood around Lincoln Street and Wilson. In addition, this water main extension allows the city to cut and cap an old four-inch water service line that has been prone to failure. The water utility is confident that this project can be completed in a timely manner and the city has contacted the business owners in the area to give them advance notice about the disruption that this project may cause. Each of the business owners is receptive to the need for the new water pipe and understand that this is a continuation of the improvements that have been started in this area. So, um, in order to approve this resolution, we're going to ask to waive formal bidding on this because the cost of the project exceeds $20,000 and the city did not formally bid the project through the sealed bid process. Instead, due to time constraints with cold weather right around the court, corner, unfortunately, the city solicited quotes. So, four quotes were reviewed, which are included in the documentation that we received. And, um, the quotes are competitive and within the engineer's estimate for this project. So, first, I will make a motion to waive formal bidding for the West Wilson Street Water Main Extension.
Second. Move by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman O'Brien to waive formal bidding on the West Water Street Water Main Extension. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Clark? Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Alderman Clark?
So, the next item, I'll be making a motion to approve Resolution 13-116-R, which is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter an agreement with Dean's Construction Company of Salmonak, Illinois, for the West Wilson Street Water Main project for an amount not to exceed $42,637.50.
Second. Move by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution 13-116-R, uh, the Water, Wilson Street Water Main Extension in an amount of $42,637.50. Any discussion? And we've got some concurrence from these folks that they're going to have this done in a short period of time, as I remember the committee discussions?
I've-
No?
Is John here?
We have some, uh, we've had some conversations with the folks on this water main that they're going to get this, or Gary? Somebody can tell us where we're-
Oh, Gary might be our answer.
I just don't want this thing to be another reason to spread out the timeframe any longer than what we have.
Right. John has spoken with the contractor and I think as relayed last week at the committee meeting, we're anticipating this really to just be a couple of week project. This is a fairly short run of water main and, and so this is not, not anything that we've anticipated to be any longer than that.
So, it should probably be done the same time everything else is done, hopefully.
I just don't need us up there throwing snow on top of it.
Oh, no, 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 no. It's not going to snow for a long time.
You've heard it, you've heard it from Alderman Clark. Any other discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Resolution 13-116-R is approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to 15, the administrator's report. Mr. McGrath?
Thanks, Mayor. Alderman Clark, Public Works Director, Home, Electric Superintendent Rogde and myself went down to St. Louis a week before last to appear before the Prairie State Management Committee. We had a very good meeting. We were able to give, uh, we did give a presentation about our current status and the impact of our ownership share. We received, uh, we had a good conversation with the, the board. We received a lot of questions. We, um, were, uh, we were given some contacts and some ideas. We had some conversations following the meetings and we're in the process of making some contacts and following up on, on that meeting. Related to electric power, we met with several of our larger electric users today. They, like the city, are preparing their 2014 budgets and wanted a briefing on what's happening in the utility. We had a very good conversation. We're going to meet again in two weeks since we will be discussing some electric issues tomorrow at the J-Cow. These, uh, people are site managers and, um, uh, key executives of these companies. They're very considerate. They understand the complexity of the issues that we're involved in and, uh, offer to work with us going forward. They certainly have an interest in ensuring the stability of their operations here in Batavia. So, it was a good, very good meeting. I wanted to thank Roger Braysh of the Chamber who initiated the, uh, meeting through a, a site manager group that he works with. And I think just the fact that, that these people gather together, it's a great way to strengthen our relationship with our industrial customers. So, we'll be reporting back to you as we meet with them, as we meet with you, um, going forward on the electric issues. Staff began budget meetings this week. They will continue through next week, followed by a second round where necessary. This is all in contemplation of, uh, budget draft distribution to you by the end of October. As I, uh, um, so, uh, separate item, as I indicated in a report to you last week, we're meeting with Batavia Enterprises later this week on the Walgreens project. Both parties have had an opportunity to review their consultant's analyses, which we will, we will be distributing. I've been asked for that and we'll, we'll get you out so you can take a look and see what these things look like. And, uh, we, um, I, I believe that they're appearing this Wednesday night for a design review. I don't think that we'll be in, uh, I don't think it'd be productive at all to have the special J-Cow meeting a week from tonight because I think what we'll be doing is, uh, we'll be presenting a, a set of, uh, you know, a term sheet basically, and that's what we'll be starting to discuss the, the framework of an agreement. It's up to you if you want to meet, but I, since we have a J-Cow the very next evening, I think it would be appropriate for us to just report that night on, as what the status is and then go ahead and have a full J-Cow on Walgreens on the 30th, depending on what happens this Friday. But that's, that's up to you. You should make that decision tonight or even tomorrow night. The Wilson Street project remains on schedule. River Street, we have a few major items left to be done. The, the most important part is that the permeable paver section is settled unsatisfactorily. It's going to be replaced in its entirety at the contractor's expense. There is some minor concrete patching and some painting that will go on. If you're familiar with the permeable paver area, it's, uh, there are little marble chips in between all the permeable pavers and the, the schedule of ordering new marble chips caused a delay. This will be done, I believe, in the first half of October. We did want to make sure none of this happened while the festivals were going on. And, uh, so it'll happen in the middle of October. And, uh, I did want to, uh, you know, remind everybody to, uh, attend Art in Your Eye. It is the only actual, little, actual city-sponsored, uh, festival that we do here. It's one of the widest-ranging and broadest in appeal of, uh, art festivals in all the suburbs. So, I think it would be nice to have your support. And that, that's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, moving to committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow night's joint committee of a whole meeting. Community Development has two issues that we're going to have on the agenda. One is the sale of the Forest Avenue lot and, that we've discussed previously. And the other one is Tanglewood Hills, unit number five redevelopment. We've had that conversation also where there's a developer that's been looking at that piece of property and think he wants to come in and give us an informal on what his intentions are. So, that'll be on that agenda also. And then we have Plan Commission on Wednesday night, as Bill mentioned, Walgreens Design Review. That's at 7:30. And that's, uh, all I have, other than Historic Preservation is scheduled for Monday, September 23rd at 5:30.
Any questions, Alderman Brown? Public Utilities, Alderman Clark?
Tomorrow night's, um, committee, we have a couple of public utility items. The Stormwater Utility Presentation. Oh, it says you. It says City Services. Well, whatever. It's going to be on tomorrow night's meeting. The electric utility status and then there's an executive session regarding purchase power. So, that's tomorrow night's meeting. Looks like we've got a couple of things for the 24th on the schedule also. Thank you.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Management work made by Alderman Clark is the Stormwater Utility Presentation tomorrow night. Thank you.
Government Services, Alderman Sparks?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow night, we'll be discussing a fund balance policy resolution and also the reviewing the J-Cow process. Thank you.
Lot of things on the agenda for tomorrow night.
to let us go, to pass, and then rolled his window down and made some comments to us. So, we just kept on going, said, "Thanks a lot," and on our way back, leaving the Farmers Market, we went to get our car. We parked on the bridge, and as we're in the crosswalk, and as we're walking across the street, a pickup truck gunned it. We made it across, but he flew right by us. And I just thought, perhaps maybe, to speak to the police chief, that we can try to monitor some of the aggressive behavior, driving behavior on Wilson Street or throughout downtown, where people were trying to promote pedestrianism, and my wife and I both felt like we were under attack, and so, you know, we're trying to promote this, this lifestyle, I think, and so maybe they can just kind of monitor it a little bit, and I'm not saying we have to ticket everyone who drives a little over the speed limit, but at least stop and give them warnings, just try to settle people down a bit.
Okay. Alderman Stark?
To Alderman O'Brien's point, it's an interesting thing. I had to ask the police chief about this, because I assumed as soon as you put your foot out in the crosswalk, that people were supposed to stop for you, and that's not what the law in Illinois is. You have to, as a pedestrian, yield to traffic, and if you walk out in front of a car just hoping they're going to stop, and they hit you, it's your fault, because you walked out into traffic. So, that was interesting to me, because I just assumed that they're painted there so that I could walk out, you know, like, when I wanted to, but that's not quite accurate. So, I think it's an education process, because I'm not sure what anybody, what the law truly is and how it reads, and what cars are supposed to do. As a driver, when do I stop? And as a pedestrian, when do I walk? So, I think that we may need, as a council?
I can answer those questions for you. If you see someone in the crosswalk, you stop. You know, no matter what the law says, you stop.
Yeah, but I also think that, you know, you can't test it. You can't just walk out in front of someone and hope they're going to slam on their brakes, so, but it's just, it's just like bicyclists, it's like everything else. The laws keep changing, and it's kind of a public education process. What is the law, and how does it apply? And, you know, as pedestrians, we have to get better at doing that, as well as as drivers.
Well, maybe even as a council, maybe we can start pushing to have that crosswalk become a viable crosswalk, where we have, the law says that it stops. We have the signs up that say it's a crosswalk. We don't have the stop sign in the middle. Maybe we can do that. I know it's, 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 it's?
PSA for VATV.
It's an I dot road, but it's?
You can drive.
It's an I dot road, but nonetheless, we need to maybe push I dot to permit that to happen.
Did you hear Alderman Wolf's comment?
No.
He said, "You and I could do a PSA for Batavia TV."
You walk, she can drive.
I can drive.
I'll go.
Afraid you might swerve.
Anybody else? Okay, moving to, anybody in the audience? Okay, moving to item 18 under the mayor's report. I'm trying to pick this up. Man, this is heavy. This past Saturday, up at the Batavia Library, they had a special day-long program about the windmill history in Batavia, and as part of this whole event, we had been contacted, oh, maybe six months ago, by the American Society of Mechanical Engineers, and they run around the United States, and they plaque various items that they think are significant historical presentations that feature mechanical engineering in the United States of America. And they brought a study team into Batavia about a year ago and made a determination that our display of windmills represented one of the best collections of mechanical engineering of the 18th century that was any place in the United States of America. So, they indicated that they wanted to prepare a plaque for us to significantly, they passed a resolution at their national convention, they had a presentation about it, and passed the presentation, or passed a motion to name this as one of their, I think there's only like 15 sites in the United States that they have, but this is one of them that they've now determined. I'm very honored by this, and they asked me what they should put on the plaque, and I suggested they get together with kind of the history aficionados of the windmill industry in Batavia, and put together a little history, and what we, I think, hopefully, will be doing with this is put it out here in the center area where the circle is, just south of City Hall, where the three windmills are, along with the water tower, and put this as kind of an explanation of what all this is all about. And they did a really nice job of explaining who the companies were, the year they were in Batavia, from 1863 to 1951, and then it talks about all the various applications that they were used for on the American frontier. And this is a, we're going to have to have a special platform made for this plaque, because this is really heavy. I'm about to drop it on myself here, but I'm very honored, and I, on behalf of the city, I was, I received it and accepted it, along with Bob Peterson, from the president of the Batavia Historical Society. So, this is yet another piece of the history presentation that I think we're going to be putting together, or we are putting together for downtown Batavia, highlighting the many various historical significant events or applications that we have on display here. And hopefully, when we get enough of them, including Mark Twain sitting at the entrance of the library and commemorate the day he visited Batavia in 1869, a number of other things we got, Mary Todd Lincoln, et cetera, we're going to hopefully be able to put together a little map that we can give to people as visitors, and like a walking tour, that they can do of our downtown area of various things that, we really have, quite honestly, one of the most impressive local history programs of any suburb in the entire Chicago area. So, I was very honored to get this, and pleased that they chose us for that particular reason. So, that being said, the other thing I'm going to report is, is that this coming Saturday at 9:00 a.m., we have another business ribbon cutting, and that's going to be out at the new art van furniture store at McKee and Randall, and I invite any of you who are free on Saturday morning at 9:00 to come out for 10 or 15 minutes and participate in cutting of the ribbon, and they're going to have some special program out there and whatever, and hopefully, it'll be a nice addition to, it is a nice addition to our community. It's already open. I know some folks have already visited, and whatever, so just for your information, that's going to be this Saturday at 9:00 in the morning out at the entrance to art van at McKee and Randall. So, that being said, I entertain a motion for executive session for the purposes of discussing collective bargaining, specifically with the Fraternal Order of Police. Alderman Brown, you want to make that motion?
I move that we enter into closed session for collective bargaining.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman O'Brien, that the council enter executive session for the purposes of discussing collective bargaining with city employees, the FOP in particular. Kirk call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atch?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.